Let's call the meeting, door, call row please.
Bolt.
Here.
Gillen.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Sehorn.
Here.
Salter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, would you join us in the invocation, please? Let's pray.
Almighty God, we come before you this evening and thanks for all that you've given us. We pray for our city, pray for continued blessings upon everyone in this community, more especially for this City Commission, may the work that's done here this evening be pleasing unto you, keep us safe from harm, and as we go from here, help us do your will. We give you the praise and the glory, amen.
Amen. Flag salute, engine position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Item number one, citizens' participation, this is that time during the program where if you have something that you want to talk to us about, we have three minutes on a per person and 12 minutes on a per subject basis, please sign in, tell us who you are, and speak away.
My name is Daniel Shaughnessy. On Saturday, I visited Lions Club Park as it was its official grand opening, and there were many, many wonderful kids there and families, and it was just a, it was really a beautiful sight to see. And as I poked around and talked to people, a lot of different names came up, and the city was amongst the most of how much effort came in, especially over the last couple of months, to really make that park into something that can grow into something very special. And so I just made a note that I wanted to come and thank you guys for working with the number of organizations that came together in that effort to really provide Shawnee with a nice space there over by OBU, the YMCA, and the Early Childhood Center. It had turned into kind of a shadow where people didn't know what was there and what the opportunities were, and just the number of kids running around and smiling throughout that day was evidence of something that you guys have planted that will come to fruition for many, many in the future. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the compliment, but the effort is, and the reward is because of the city staff, and the way they've worked hard on this to bring it together. Anyone else?
Good evening. Michelle James.
Randy James.
I'm Randy James, my husband.
1522 North Broadway.
We would like to request a meeting for the biker lane on Broadway that has been proposed. We have talked to several residents up and down Broadway, for and against, that would like to have some sort of situation where we can all sit and talk about it before it becomes a bigger deal on social media than it should be. We don't know what's being proposed exactly, I mean, we've gotten the letters, we've gotten all this, but there's this being told, this being told, we all need to get together in a meeting, in some sort of meeting, before this is put to any kind of vote or whatever is the plan. So we're here to kind of speak for those people.
1522 North Broadway, right across from Graves.
Graves Floral is where we are.
And, and one of the reasons we, we're homeowners, and our neighbor next to our south, she's lived in this house for 48 years, and it will be a, she says it's going to bring the value down of her house, of her property.
And a burden for her, but we have spoken to
Several.
Many residents. We've gone through and written down the addresses of the people that have biker lane signs in the front of their yard. I don't know that all of them realize what they're giving up because a lot of them had cars parked in their, front of their house.
I mean, we have people coming over for relatives, friends, for holidays, watch football, watch basketball, you know, sporting events.
And we need that parking.
Even come to Shawnee to go, we take them carpool to high school, you know, because when you run out of room there, there's no place to park either.
And that's where I work, but
And then, you know.
It's just an, it's a situation that needs to be addressed before it becomes a huge thing on, and you guys know as well as anybody, social media can be a bad thing or a good thing, and at this point, it's kind of a both, honestly, and it needs, we need to have a meeting. So that's what we're requesting, if we can get a meeting with the citizens of Broadway.
Okay.
Okay?
Was it James with an M or James?
J-A-M-E.
J-A-M-E.
Yes, and I've written down my address here, and he's gonna... But we do have several residents that are wanting to get together, so.
Okay.
And I'm sure there will be more after we talk to them, so. But we're, we are against, but we also would like to talk to the people that are for. We want to hear both sides.
We hope to hear from lots of folks.
Yeah. I hope so too. And that's why we want them to come to the City Commission meeting as well as, you know, we are, everybody kind of needs to come in Shawnee regardless of what it's about, I think.
And, and we're more of being fit, you know, like your provision says.
I'm all four blue zones.
The sidewalks in front of our house, on our block,
Have not been fixed.
They wasn't fixed when they fixed the east side, not the west side.
Yeah, they still haven't fixed it.
When they ran the gas line and everything. So I don't know if that wasn't meant to be. Our neighbors, you know, she's 83, I think it is, I don't know, I don't know if the city can be held liable to might fall and hurt yourselves with Halloween coming up on the sidewalk.
But those sidewalks are horrible still, so.
The sidewalks.
Those need to be addressed as well, I mean, because of the, you know, the situation with parking.
And it's just not our block, you know, it's the next block up too that's bad, but...
The sidewalks are a work in progress.
Oh yeah, definitely, we just wondered why they kind of skipped us, what was going on with that, so, but we'll, we'll get it all answered, but that's what we need, is a meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going, going, gone. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent, is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would entertain a motion to approve.
I approve.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
I approve.
Second by Commissioner Sehorn. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. We do not have an animal control pet of the week, so we're on to item four. This is an item that, that I had placed on the prior month's meeting, and really, we got several boards around town that have got some vacancies, but I thought we might, I might just run over what boards we actually have in the city. The Airport Advisory Board has seven seats, length of term is three years, and it currently has no vacancies. Shawnee Community Beautification Committee has 11 seats, 10 citizens and one commissioner. We have no vacant citizen seats, but we do have a vacant commissioner seat, so if any of you gentlemen would like to sit on the beautification committee, let me or Lisa know, and, and that, we can call, we can arrange for that.
Thank you.
Community Service Contract Review Committee is three citizen seats, the mayor by title, and one commissioner. We have one vacant seat. The length of the term is three years, but what this committee does is it looks at all the contracts that we have with various entities like Central Disposal, Senior Citizens Center, Shawnee Ford, all those contracts that we have with third parties, it's an important committee, so if you have any interest in serving on the Community Contract Review Committee, again, the applications are available on the website. Shawnee Housing Authority has five seats, the length of term is three years. We have one vacant seat. The, the person with the expired term is continuing to serve, so it's not an emergency, but she's on my case every time I see her to get a replacement, so we're in need of somebody on the Shawnee Housing Authority. Oklahoma Baptist University has four seats, and we have no vacant seats, and length of term is six years. Planning Commission has seven seats, we have no vacant seats, they meet, they are one of the more regularly meeting committees that we have, and in terms of my perspective, they're one of the more important committees that we have, they meet the first Wednesday of every month. Shawnee Civic and Cultural Development Authority, commonly referred to as the Expo, we have four city-appointed seats, two county-appointed seats, there are no vacancies at the moment. Shawnee Hospital Authority, there are 10 seats and there are no vacant seats, generally, these people will be people that were on the board of the hospital back before they sold to SSM, and I don't exactly know the underlying reason why we still have to keep them in place, but the lawyers tell me that we do, so. Shawnee Library Board has six seats, we have one vacant seat presently, they generally meet the second Tuesday of each quarter, so it's not a big time commitment, but if you're interested in the library, serving on the library board, again, go to the city's website and complete an application. Shawnee Parks and Recreation Committee, four citizen seats, one commissioner seats. We have no vacancies at the moment. Shawnee Urban Renewal Authority, we have five seats, there are no vacancies. Traffic Commission, we have seven seats and currently no vacancies. Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have five seats, we have three vacant seats. This is an important committee from a planning standpoint, because this is the committee that governs the variances from, from our zoning laws, and the decisions of this board are final, so if somebody wants to put up a flagpole that's taller than what the zoning allows, and this board says they can do it, then they can do it, and I'm told that that doesn't come before the commission. So it is important, and we do have three vacant seats, so would appreciate someone entertaining sitting on that committee. The Senior Citizens Shawnee Board, we have nine citizen seats, one commissioner seat, we have one vacant seat that we just filled on the consent agenda with Shirley Gregory, so there are presently no vacancies on the senior citizens' board. Those are the boards that we have among the city and the vacancies that we currently have, so anyone that would, would entertain serving in any of those vacancies, we, we would appreciate it. Thank you for your attention. Item five, consider, consideration of a resolution to declare certain items surplus property and authorizing sale of said items at auction or disposal at the city's discretion.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is basically the same as it's always been the past years. You know, the city, from time to time, has items that no longer work or no longer useful to the city that we put in front of an auction to sell publicly. My memo serves for both, for, for that, that list and for the contract for the auctioneers, so there's not that much this year.
That's good.
The bad thing is the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Any questions of James? Would entertain a motion to approve.
I approve.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
I approve.
Second by Commissioner Bolt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus and no longer needed for the city purposes, describing said items and authorizing the sale of said items by public auction, and in the event items do not sell at public auction, disposal at the city's discretion.
Thank you very much, call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Item six, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve an agreement with XL auction-to-auction surplus city property.
It's going to be at the Expo again?
Yes, it'll be at the Expo again, and it is a Saturday after Thanksgiving.
[laughing]
Yeah. On the items that are sold, if they sell for less than a thousand, normally, our fee is, is 10% of that cost, if the item sells over a thousand, we're not generally assessed a cost for that, for the auctioneer, but there is a buyer's 10% on everything, so, and that's basically it, it's the same company that we contract with each year out there, and he takes his fees out before he writes us a check, so.
Any questions of James?
If I have anything that's going to sell over a thousand dollars.
Do we have anything? There's some vehicles in there, and
Oh, okay.
Sometimes they do.
Yeah.
Would entertain a motion to approve.
I approve.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt. Second by Commissioner Gillen. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Item seven, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve the 2019 comprehensive plan.
Well, I'd ask the, as Commissioner Salter said he hadn't had a chance to go through it, so I'd ask that this be deferred to tonight, so. I also had some questions, but I haven't had time to meet with Becky about them, but I will, if they're not life-threatening or anything else, I'll meet with her, get to go over those, but that doesn't mean that it can't be approved, so.
RDG did our presentation last time, they're the firm out of Omaha that has worked on the plan the last 18 months. I do have the draft in front of me, if there's any questions that I can answer, and just wanted to remind you guys, it is a living, breathing document, so as the needs change or there's something that we need to pursue a different direction, we can absolutely make amendments to this plan, but it should serve as a roadmap for our community as we develop out over the next 15 or 20 years. Staff feels very confident in the plan and some of the proposals, I think it tees us up for success among community and economic development, and if there's anything specific that I can answer or speak to, I'm happy to do that.
Questions with Rebecca?
Seem to have enough of both opportunities and safeguards. That's what I was concerned with, is the flexibility of it. From what I heard, I was satisfied.
Oh, I'll cover mine a bit, but I, one thing that, the reason I didn't, I don't do it now is that I just pointed out it's just a flexible document, just like the budget if subjects change, so it's not cast in stone, so I'll be happy to do that.
And you, you'll be updating us annually?
Right, yearly.
Yes, absolutely, that's part is to do an annual review, uh-huh.
That's one of the things that's called for, for yearly update from, so.
That's right.
No, I'm fine, I've had opportunity to read it, and I read it four times, it's tough reading, but 195 pages, and I don't have a problem with it.
I approve.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod to adopt, second by Commissioner Gillen.
Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Consider bids requests for qualifications RFQ, Community Center Roofing Project. Did I skip an item?
Yeah, I think Community Center Roof.
That's what I just read, isn't it?
Should be eight.
Yeah.
I think you're, I think you're good.
There's two items.
There's two items in there.
Two items under eight.
Okay.
So I think you're confused, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's, it's Gen 9 item eight, you're on eight A.
Okay.
All right, so we did go out for bid for the Community Center Roof on September 3rd, and I believe last commission meeting, we accepted those bids, staff has went over the bids, and we are recommending to award to the lowest bid Quality Homes Incorporated out of Oklahoma City for $26,900.
Are there any questions of James?
Is that for the cover building, or just for the gym bar, or what?
That is for the Community Center down south.
Oh, okay.
Composition roof.
Down by Washington. What was amazing to me is all the bids that were sent out, there wasn't anyone from Shawnee bid on it, and then there were four bids that weren't on the bid document. That's, that's surprising to me that of all that were sent out to Shawnee, no one bid on it.
Yeah, and for a composition roof, one of the easier roofs to put on.
Right. Their motion to approve. You'll know, there's three or four.
Well, you have bid bonds and bonding and stuff like that, which a lot of local contractors don't have, so that's one of the problems that the city has, is because of the requirement of bidding, bid bonding and so forth, and warrants bonds.
Third motion to approve the recommendation of staff, moved by Commissioner Harrod. Your second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call the question.
Flagman.
Motion carries seven zero, item eight B.
All right, this is to, what we're doing is asking to, for permission to enter into contract with Planning Design Group to do the engineering plans, you know, to actually go out and redo Woodland Veterans Park and Kid Space Park, but the, the cost here is to do those plans, to get the, the bidable documents that we need, the drawings and everything, to be able to bid that out. And we did have a meeting with Planning Design Group, we had Chance and Finance in there, and we all shot them a bunch of questions and developed a good set of scope of services, and I also added in with your packet CLS's estimate of what those design costs could be, and we're not too far off of those, so what we are recommending is to plan, to approve the contract for Planning Design Group, any amount of $207,500, which is broke down to be $176,000 for all of the bidable documents, which is about 7.5% of what's the estimated cost is to build those, $6,500 to administer the bid process, and $25,000 to help manage the projects.
That's supervision of construction and so forth?
It's limited supervision, it'll be looking at a lot of submittals and inspections of the, of the construction periodically as it's going on to ensure that it's, it's going as designed. The city will have somebody on, on the project majority of the time.
So do you have an estimate of what these designs might run, ballpark estimate?
Uh, the designs themselves, both of them together, for the redesign of Woodland Veterans Park and Kid Space, is estimated at $2,384,788.
So that's not, that's about 8% then?
Roughly 7.5, yeah.
Other questions of James?
These will be funded out of that half cent sales tax, temporary, half cent sales tax.
How long do you think this project's going to take, James?
It'll be probably about six months on design and construction documents, and after bid out, especially for Kid Space, it'll probably be a year of construction on it. We won't bid out any of the projects till, oh, late next year, after summer.
Like I said, a lot of money for design, but they usually charge from 6 to 8%, so that's probably not too bad, I'm just concerned about the 200 and some thousand.
But that takes us all the way through construction.
Okay.
Other questions of James? Would entertain a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
By Commissioner Harrod, second by Commissioner Bolt. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Acknowledge monthly sales tax and budget report.
Good evening. So, sales tax and use tax came in strong, and sales tax was 8.33% above projected budget for this month, and we are sitting at 3.78% above projection for the year. Use tax came in 72% higher than projected budget, and in total, we're a little bit over 65% higher than we were expecting.
Any idea what, of what that is or anything?
Not, not exactly, I mean, we're getting more as laws have changed, we're getting more internet sales for use tax, and then for sales tax, it's just coming in higher than expected. We also could, we budgeted very conservatively, so I would expect it to come in a little higher than we expected. Budget-wise, we're right in line, we're sitting at 75% available budget left in the general fund, we're about 71, 72% in SMA, we just paid debt service, so that's very normal, but everything else, there's nothing really out there, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Perhaps we have a trend starting.
I hope. We'll see.
Questions of Ashley? I'd just like to say I compliment Ashley on her budget reports. Because as long as I've sat on the commission, the commission's only received sales tax reports, and I have in the past asked for accompanying information, but I don't guess I ask hard enough, and she has provided us with a report each month that completely breaks it down by department, and we're into the, into the first quarter of this fiscal year, and you, you can look and see what's been spent and what's been encumbered and the remaining balance, and so you can just follow it from month to month, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to compliment, this is my fourth term, and this is the best I've ever seen, and I certainly appreciate it, I'm
Thank you.
Cheers now, this is
I'm glad it's helpful.
Really a good report, thank you very much, that's, I know it takes a lot of work and effort, so it's really good, thank you.
I think we all echo that.
Thank you.
Very good report, been a long time coming, but it's
By acclamation.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport. Nope, I'll jump ahead, new, is there any new business?
No, there's none business.
You don't have any business?
Commissioners' comments, we already got our commissioners' comments.
I mean, echo what James has said about Ashley and Steph's job force, giving us the information that we need, and we really appreciate that, and it really helps keep everything above board where everybody can see it, and that's the way it ought to be, and we really appreciate all your, all your hard work. Boo on Bell this week, so it'll be a crazy week downtown, Carnival's already moved in, and they're setting up, and they'll start operation Thursday evening, and then Friday evening and all day Saturday, and
Got big TV there?
There was, Fox 25 said they were going to come, and they had to back out, so they, they won't be able to, so that's, that's kind of disappointing, but it is what it is. Saturday, if, if you haven't been to it, you need to go see it, because how that many people get into downtown Shawnee, I have no idea that they do, and it's, it's a lot of fun, I think the weather's supposed to be good, so ought to be, ought to be a fun weekend in Shawnee coming up.
It is good to see Boo on Bell, I agree with you on that, because so many of our things we've taken for granted, or we've saw as special over the years, have diminished so much for our children and grandchildren, so it's good to see these projects that come out and give something a little different, to renew the ideas of some of the things that we were able to see, and congratulations on that.
Thanks.
Again, I want to mention, Ashley, what an excellent report that is, I also wanted to remind everyone that Salvation Army Spaghetti Day is Thursday the 24th, so we don't want to forget that, and have morning and afternoons, and invite everyone down to, to that. When is Trick or Treat night, send everybody?
31st.
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 No, yeah, Boo on Bell, it covered that, that is a, that is a great event, Seth does a great job putting on that event as well as all the other ones that they do, so everyone needs to attend that. I did get to go to the Expo last week for the Halloween festivities, Halloween Town, the turnout was amazing, there were a lot of, a lot of kids there, phenomenal turnout, and I know they're going to continue to improve on that for next year. And I know they're going to continue to improve on that for next year, already making plans, I think, so. Good job on that.
I really don't have much. Everything pretty well been covered. Actually, I appreciate the reports, though. They're really, really good.
I think I've said all that can be said. I would just, I'd like to add one point. I appreciate Michelle and Randy coming and expressing their views about Broadway and all, and that will get some dialogue going, so.
Thank you. Wouldn't note that the financial report's available to the public, so if y'all are interested in digging into that, look away, ask, ask your questions. We're trying very hard to get more information out there as we develop it, and it's still a work in process, and will continue to be. But you can actually get some of your questions answered, so, again, kudos. And now we're adjourned to the Airport Authority. Would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Rutherford. Second by Commissioner Sehorn. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
No, there's none business.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority and would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Commissioner Gillum. Second by Commissioner Bolt. Call the question. Motion carries seven zero. Is there any new business?
No, there's none business.
We are adjourned. Thank you.